Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here. Brostow. Brostow, absent, Thompson. Thompson, absent, Johansson.
Here.
Johansson, here. Hawley.
Here.
Hawley, here. Pulos.
Here.
Pulos, here. Viera.
Here.
Viera, here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here. Rita. Rita, absent. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Osling.
Here.
Osling, here. Ten, present.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve this city council minutes for the date of January the 12th, 2016. I have a motion. Alderman Slattery, second by Alderman Hawley. Any questions? If not, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten, I surrender.
Thank you very much. Council.
Good evening. You are all welcome at tonight's meeting. You are politely reminded the purpose of tonight's meeting is for deliberation of the council regarding city business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor, approach somebody who will announce your name and address. Please be advised comments may be limited to three minutes according to the appropriate city personnel.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brostow? Do you have anything?
Well, Happy New Year's to everyone.
Happy New Year to you.
Hopefully we'll have a good one. As everyone know, the next month is Black History Month and a lot of things are going on. Library have extremely a lot of programs. If you look in the forum newspaper, there's a whole page of all different kind of activities. Activities not just for children, but activities for adults too. This year, the text annex is also supporting our Black History Month. So they're gonna have a pre-program on Thursday night. It's gonna be singers, people play instruments. So it'll be worth going to. Everything's free. Our program is gonna be on the 17th, Friday, in this room, on the 17th at seven o'clock. And this year, because of the, because of the problem of Chicago and you hear a lot of crimes, I decided that this program should be on Dr. King. He's the only one that I know that 100%, as far as a human, 100% was nonviolent and he was more for peace. So this year, everything will be done surrounded about "I Have a Dream." We also have a display in the library, so have a little time, go in there and visit. They got a lot of things going on. Down in the children department, they're gonna have storytellers. So your children, grand, excuse me, grandchildren, there's flowers in the back. They have a great storyteller. She come in costume. And that particular program will be on the 17th. Now, they also have a man who's coming in there who's impersonated Abraham Lincoln. And he'll be there on the 11th. The library have a, have a schedule of every, all their events. All you have to do is go on their website. Everyone is welcome. Everything is free.
What are the times for the six, the six to the 17th?
The 19th is at seven o'clock. The children program start at four. Wednesday at four o'clock and that's on the 17th. Abraham Lincoln, he'll be here February the 11th at 3:30. Hopefully you could, this is something good, something, give you something to smile about for change. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Stevo?
Hi, my name's Carol DePace Green. I live at 2731 Orchard Street in Blue Island. I want to ask about the next public hearing. Do we have a date yet?
Nothing concrete yet.
Nothing yet. Do we have any new proposed maps?
Other than the last one, I'm waiting for the new one.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for your input. I appreciate it. It's one way to keep people informed. Of course, everybody's seen Flint, Michigan on the news? Anybody miss it?
Go ahead.
Okay. That's pretty much the direction that the Blue Island Jawa was gonna end up in as well. Everybody heard that that water was untreated, which contributed to the lead levels and exposure to lead. Any news on getting our money back from the Jawa? Anybody?
Nothing.
Nothing yet?
No.
Okay. It was also brought to my attention that apparently monthly on the Blue Island website, there are payments to cigars on consignment in the amount of $300 to $500.
Golf course. It's a golf course.
It's a golf course.
They're for sale at the golf course.
Thank you for explaining that. I wondered if there was a cigar club, if it needed help?
No.
Yeah.
They're for sale at the golf course.
I figured that, that could be the only possibility that I could come up with. And then apparently there was also a $59,000 payment for a roof? Somebody said, mhm? We got a roof? For a $59,000 roof?
Is that the rec center? That was for the rec center. For the rec center.
Pardon me?
It's for the rec center. For the rec center.
So you're telling me that the roof was $118,000?
Correct.
It must be made of gold.
It's gonna last a long time to flood Blue Island.
We'll be looking forward to hearing about the programming that's gonna go in there.
Very soon.
That'll be worth at least $120,000.
Very soon.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. Anyone else? Mr. Stevo?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The prayer that the city attorney says before every council meeting, if you will, the prayer that she says.
You mean the public comment thing?
If you will, the prayer, her prayer. It seems to me to be so unconstitutional. It seems to be unconstitutional. It seems to me we're observers. We're limited to three minutes to speak. I have a suggestion. What if the seven aldermen who are up for election next year, how about they take turns and say in that prayer instead of the city attorney? I think the aldermen who represent us need to say that prayer. I think would have meaning.
Anything else, Mr. Stevo?
The policy of addressing the chair, I was told that that is not in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. That we, we have the right under the Open Meetings Act to come here and address any public official we so desire. And we can also expect to have a comment from them. So with, within that spirit, I'd like to ask President Bellato, fill us in on the latest worth of the Jawa. Fill us in.
There's nothing new, Mr. Stevo. There's nothing new information.
Well, there's never really been any public comment. There's need to be more discussion.
It's a bad issue, Mr. Stevo.
Well, we have to bring it back to life because it really needs to be investigated. Because we lost a lot of money. Lot of money that we can't afford to lose.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Stevo. Anything else?
Yes, yes, Mayor. I'm looking for the chair of the Finance Committee.
She's not here at this time.
Oh, okay. Would you happen to know what are the dates of the appropriation meetings?
They're still working on those dates.
Still working.
We'll make sure it gets on the web and we'll inform the public.
Okay, Mayor, City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevo. Anyone else? If not, Mr. Meck, can you join me at the center podium? Or just someone? Oh, could you hold on a second?
Sure.
Sorry about that.
I have a concern.
I need you to come up first, say your name, your address, and then we go.
Okay, my name is Corinne Jones. 2853 141 Place, Blue Island, Illinois.
How can we help you?
Uh, my concern is about the water bill. My water bill is up to $3,000.
Let's do this. I don't think you want that to be public comment. We can have someone or myself right after the meeting, we can address that bill.
Okay, I tried to address it with Bob and Mr. Hub.
He is, he is sick and he will be coming back hopefully soon. So we'll get someone right now after he's addressed it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Meck. We're gonna do this, Mr. Meck, where you're gonna stand right there. I'm gonna stand aside so that the camera can see you real well. We're here honoring the accomplishments and the legacy of Mike Meck, also known as the Bungalow Chef. Are you ready? I'm ready. Whereas born and raised in Blue Island, his family dates back to the 1860s and whereas like many true Blue Islanders, he boomeranged back after a 20-year stint living in Chicago. Mike's professional career has crossed over into many different avenues in the food business and whereas a trained chef, chocolatier, and business developer for the famed House of Fine Chocolates, research and development chef for H.J. Heinz, and sales and marketing for Appetizer &amp; Inc. and other gourmet companies, currently he is a sales director and selling chef for Cuisine Innovations, the largest privately owned company of its kind in the country based in New Jersey. And whereas his love of Blue Island, his Mayberry and Bedford Falls is evident in his ongoing involvement in the community garden, cooking classes for children, library cooking classes, hosts numerous food pantry drives for Lutheran charities, and for the last, and I repeat, for the last five years, has provided Thanksgiving meals for our police force and Christmas Day dinners to our firemen. And whereas Mike's involvement include lifetime member of the Blue Island Historical Society and the First Evangelical Lutheran Church, which is currently, which currently he is on the Call Committee and the Cemetery Board, and whereas he was past board member of the Blue Island Chamber of Commerce and for the Blue Island Preservation Council, and whereas contributor to Who's Hungry magazine, Forum, and other publications, and to the Food Channel, E-How Video Channels, and as firm supporter of Shop Local, he filmed many city events and interviewed local businesses for the city of Blue Island. And whereas created a chocolate fundraiser for Old Best, Bungalow Chef, Recipe Revival Blog, and now Bungalow Kitchen, filmed over 40 shorts of Bungalow Chef for BITV, and held a fundraiser luncheon for the Blue Island Historical Society, buffets, bungalows, and Blue Island. And the bungalow was opened up for the 2014 Blue Island House Walk, and whereas brought public television, asked his old house to Blue Island, and assisted in numerous political campaigns, whereas Mike has just asked driving passion for Blue Island, following in his father's Lou Meck's footsteps as Mr. Blue Island, the Bungalow Chef. Now therefore be resolved by myself as the mayor of the city of Blue Island, City Council of the city of Blue Island, County of Cook and State Illinois, do hereby acknowledge the selfless efforts of Mike Meck, the Bungalow Chef, to pursue noble acts of kindness, tutelage, and sharing delicious recipes for all people of the state's past his 12th day of January 2016. We're gonna do this. Do you have a motion? Motion by Alderman Osling, second by Alderman Pulos. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. And from my understanding, congratulations for you had a fundraiser recently?
True, for the Historical Society.
And again, I heard it was a complete success.
Right, thank you. This. Is this on?
It's on.
I have to say a couple things.
Go ahead.
So first of all, thank you, Mayor, Councilman, really the residents of Blue Island. You know, sometimes being a Blue Islander isn't easy, but it gives me great joy. And I think, you know, rolling up our sleeves, working together, using our volunteer talents can help the city move forward, repurpose for the future. You know, for 20 years, as the mayor said, I left Blue Island and I could move any place in the world, but I came back home, just not to my Blue Island or your, your Blue Island, but our Blue Island. So thank you very much.
Any bits, city? No bits. City first business? Any?
No business.
City treasurer? Nothing. City attorney? Nothing. Committee reports, community development committee.
Yes, Your Honor, the committee met December 17th and it was called to order at 7:24. Present were Alderman Hawley, Bellato, Carr, Pittman, and Brostow, absent were Alderman Rita, Osling, and Johansson. Also present were treasurer Bellato, Jason Berry, Sean Terry, Alderman Johnson, Bob Jackson, Fire Chief Klinker, and Mr. Gonzalo from Phillips Station. Mr. Gonzalo asked the committee consider, to consider a BYOB license for his business. He has customers who come in looking to have a drink with their meal. Due to the proximity to Eisenhower High School, he is not allowed to have a liquor license, so he's looking to see if it might be possible to have a BYOB license. After much discussion, Mr. Berry is going to look into what communities do as far as BYOB is concerned, report back to the committee, a report and recommendation without being turned over to the mayor administration and directors for consideration. Alderman Johnson asked about the sprinkler requirement for any new construction in Blue Island. The developer of Deer Point is looking to build more homes and is looking for a variance. That was decided that it would go to Public Health and Safety Committee for consideration at their next meeting. He also asked about the rec center. He was concerned about the length of time it was taking to do the repairs. Mr. Jackson gave his report of activities. The roofing has been completed. The HVAC system has been completed. All the light fixtures have been repaired and installed in the gym. They are starting to prep for painting and they will be painting soon. The plumbers are in there installing drinking fountains, et cetera. The windows have been replaced. The security system is to be installed. They are hoping to be finished by the end of January and opening at some point thereafter. The city attorney is working on a rental agreement. Will be also working with the Park District as well. The agreement needs to be in place before the doors open. Discussion about a rec board being appointed was had. Alderman Johnson said he had people who were interested in being part of that and would forward their contact information. Jason Berry presented the building and planning report for November 2015. Revenues for the month of October were $36,696.48. Total revenues for the 11-month period ending November 30th, 2015 were $432,831.69. There were a total of 130 violations brought to Housing Court in November with total fines issued of $33,950. Alderman Bellato asked about follow-up on the fines. Mr. Berry said they are currently not doing anything. There's a limit as to how far back we can go, but most of the fines are within that time period. A discussion was had about what we thought the best process was to go about collecting those fines and Mr. Berry will have a complete 2015 report from permits on how, and how much is outstanding on fines in January. On the jewel property, they put up barricades so people won't park there. They're starting with remediation first. They're digging up the contaminated soil, replacing it with clean fill, and they'll start demolition after that. Obviously, that's a long underway at this point. Sean Halloran was not in attendance and there was no report. Sean Terry forwarded his business license report. Approved business licenses in November included Integrity Medical at 2428 Vermont Street, opening as an outpatient clinic specializing in physical therapy and chiropractic services for patients with injuries due to work injuries, sports injuries, auto accidents, and slips and falls. J&amp;L Multi-Service, 12720 Western Avenue, Unit 1R, received approval to open as an existing business under new ownership. They'll continue to operate as a multi-service retail establishment including prepaid telephones and fee-for-service document copying, transmittal, et cetera. Annis Bridal Boutique, 2357 York Street was approved to operate a full-service bridal boutique specializing in the sale of special occasion gowns, dresses, and special event decorations. Magnum Insurance Agency at 12962 Ashland, Unit C, has received approval to operate a full-service professional office specializing in personal and professional insurance coverage. They are a state-registered insurance agent. There were several new business license applications in November. Synopsis of Code Enforcement also was presented. Under old business, it was moved by Alderman Pittman to approved minutes from the November meeting. Alderman Carr seconded. All in favor, motion passed. Mr. Berry reported that the payment received in December for September for the Business and Development District was just over $44,000. The money is being accumulated to be spent on improvements on us in the Business Development District area. Sean Terry gave an overview of the proposals received. We received 10 proposals and the planning department is doing their initial review. There's a wide range in dollar amounts which are for planning and engineering, only no construction cost. They are analyzing the differences at the next meeting, the proposals. For the top four solid proposals will be discussed. We did hear from the state that they will be letting Western Avenue Bridge in June 2016. That project is 100% IDOT funded. Things we are looking for like special lighting or parking underneath need to be discussed now. Mr. Berry will, will report back to the committee once he's looked at the plans of this project. Alderman Bellato would like lighting on the south side of the bridge and stress the parking underneath the bridge. Under Alderman concerns, Pyramidals published an announcement that it was closing as of December 4th. They have ceased operations and everyone has been laid off and they are looking to sell the property. Alderman Brostow wants to make sure that whatever happens to the property, that they come into compliance and they need to address the lighting and noise problems, et cetera. A reminder that starting in January, the Community Development Committee will meet on the second Wednesdays of each month. There being no further business. It was moved by Alderman Brostow and second by Alderman Pittman to adjourn, and the meeting was adjourned at 8:47 PM. And we met on Wednesday, January 13th at 7:00 PM. And our next meeting is on Wednesday, February 10th at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers.
Anything else? No, sir. Thank you very much. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I have a motion for approval of payroll for December 18th, 2015 for $374,314.80. And also for December 31st, 2015 for $413,939.21.
We have a motion. We have a second by Alderman Osling. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten, I surrender.
Thank you very much.
Second, I have a motion for approval of accounts payable, first December 28th, 2015, for $540,871.65. And then also for January 15th, 2016, for $439,402.71.
We have a motion. We have a second by Alderman. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten, I surrender.
Thank you. Anything else?
It's a trump, thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee.
Ah, yes, Your Honor. Our minutes from the December 8th meeting. Present were Chief James Klinker, Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Supervisor Kim McGeever, Alderman Nancy Thompson, Alderman James Johansson, Alderman George Pulos, Alderman Dexter Johnson, and myself, absent or director John Rita and Don Marshbanks. Mr. Alan Stevo was present as a citizen. The meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. There was a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes from the November meeting by Alderman Thompson, second by Alderman Pulos. All in favor, motion carried. Under the Fire Department report, the Fire Department had 271 calls in November, 185 were EMS calls. 151 patients were treated, 139 patients were transported, and 46 patients refused transport. Fire Department responded to 17 general fire alarms and 23 minor fire alarms. They responded to 34 auto aid calls. Most of these calls were from Calumet Park. They had 11 calls to man the station. They received one mutual aid response call. The average response time was 5.6 minutes. Medical reimbursement services for November was $45,155.28. Falls fire alarm fees collected in November were $200. During the month of November, the Fire Department was called out on one car fire, two stove fires, one structure fire, and one dryer fire at Blue Kangaroo. Under general information, firefighter Pennant passed his probation. The annual service testing of all ladders was completed. The Fire Department performed an evacuation drill at Metro South Medical Center. The new ambulance 2152 passed safety lane and IDPH inspection and was placed in service. On November the 24th, Father Ken Carlson did a blessing of the new ambulance, a new police cruiser, and a new BEMA vehicle. Firefighters McClement and Duffy completed the fire inspector's class. Under fire prevention, Lieutenant Olson inspected eight fire alarm systems, one sprinkler system, seven annual inspections, and seven license inspections during the month of November. As a note under the Fire Department, they are going to be taking part in a charity fundraiser stair climb in Old Brook, so if anyone wants to make a donation to that, I'm sure if you want to stop by the firehouse, they'd be happy to get the donations. Under the Police Department, as of December 1st, Commander Sisk was assigned to the 911 Center to help Supervisor McGeever update the training manuals and operating procedures. Dispatches will be getting on-the-job training more frequently. The Police Department answered 2,307 calls, including 701 business premise checks, 154 were liquor establishment checks. Under stats and cases of interest, there was 110 alarm calls, all unfounded, two attempted robberies, two robberies, six residential burglaries, four calls for shots fired, all were unfounded, 99 domestic disputes, 288 traffic stops. Total money collected for the month of November was $43,850.27. Police Department patrolled 17,466 miles in the month of November. Under liquor establishment calls, there was one intoxicated subject call, one neighbor complaint call, two subject removal calls, two disturbance calls, and one criminal damage to property call. Under community policing, the community policing unit completed lockdown drills at all the schools except Whittier, which was scheduled for December. The community policing unit assisted probationary recruit, who is now an officer with us, recruit Jeremy Rhodes with the implementation into the academy. The community policing unit responded to several calls regarding hospitalized seniors who needed assistance from family members. Under the 911 Center, in November, the 911 Center answered a total of 7,248 calls. Three dispatchers are currently in training. Code Red calls were sent concerning the Division Street Bridge closure and repair.